Can you see her agenda, Scotty?
Yeah, I can.
Alright, sweet.
Yes. I got on your. Except I probably didn't have on this computer.
No, I probably would've sent it to the... I don't even know if I can.
Minimize mine, you think?
Oh, no, I just, I just forwarded it to Scotty. So which email does he want it on?
He deleted it off this one because he deletes all the stuff off. He said, send it to the regular one and it should pop up on this one.
Zach, can you hear us? Zach?
Zach, can you hear us? Zach?
Zach, can you hear us? Zach?
Getting a lot of feedback. Oh. Set one to that one.
I'm still too far behind on the please. Let me be honest, I can just take it home, too.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so tonight, tonight we're just gonna see the city council agenda on our left and then just you up in the corner.
Who's ever talking should come up there.
Okay. So when I talk right now, I should be up there? Is that correct? Can you hear me?
I can hear ya.
Okay. I can see you. But when I'm talking now, can you see me?
I can always see you at the top.
Okay.
It switches on my screen to whoever's talking, so I see you when you're talking, Larry.
Okay, I can see you now, Scott. Okay, just gonna be a little different look tonight then.
Yeah, we're just trying out the agenda. We thought since most of you guys don't have two screens to go back and forth, this might be beneficial, but if it's not, we can just get rid of the agenda and just have everyone's bright, smiling faces on here. If you don't like the view of the screen layer at the top right, you can switch it to grid or whatever you want to do, like it was for the civic center meeting.
And then I get rid of the agenda?
I'm not sure if you can get rid of it altogether, but you can change how you see people.
Okay, so where do I go to change it? Up in the right corner?
Yeah, it says swap shared screen with video.
I better leave it alone. I'll just leave it alone, Zach.
But now when they talk, they won't pull up on the screen. Big, like, is that what he was saying? You know, before, like, when the person's talking, that's the person that comes on the screen.
So Zach, if I want to see more people, where do I see that at? Where do I change it out at? Up in the right corner?
A blue arrow button. If you want to just scroll the attendees, or then there's that white little icon. It says swap.
And that's up in the right corner.
Is that me peeping? No.
He said, who's ever talking? Yeah, just scroll.
I like the agenda on there. That helps.
Larry hates it, so.
I'll get used to it.
We're unused by the host. Can you hear us now?
The microphones. There, that's good. I can see you guys too now.
It was going that way, and then you moved it back. It was, it was all the way over to the right, then you moved it back. You push your bar.
Can you hear me, Janelle?
But the volume. There you go. There you go. Hmm, I don't know.
Can you hear me now? I can hear you great.
Do you see me now?
Yes.
Oh, good. Good for you guys.
Zach, you have lines today.
That's because I have my other monitor plugged in. If I don't talk, you won't see it, hopefully.
I still see it.
I'll just do without it.
And Scotty's muted. Do you want to be muted, Scott?
I do when I'm not talking.
Ask him how you get all everybody's pictures.
You said you just go this way.
Well, no, I think that's on.
Participants. Did we stop the video? We've made a day.
Zach, how do we get all the pictures up on there?
I don't know. Is there a few?
We had them at one time. That's right.
If you toggle over it up at the top right, it says swap the shared screen with the video.
That's full screen, and it says settings. I think we're gonna get to that. We didn't have it the last time either.
We're only getting.
We haven't got Davey, but we just got Dave's name on there. Participants, we got.
What we have is the agenda report for the special meeting on, on the screen.
Nikki's sharing her screen. We thought it might be beneficial, just so you guys, it might be a little easier to follow along. We don't have to do that, and we can do it with the video like last time. Just thought we'd try this. It's up to you.
Yeah, it says that we're sharing it, but the only thing we're getting is the agenda picture and then your picture right now.
And whoever's talking will show up on that picture, Janelle.
Okay.
Okay, but doesn't matter that, yeah, okay.
Okay. We didn't have a work session, to my knowledge. And it is 9:30, so. Look all of the participants, are they all here? Larry?
Here.
Val? Val's here. Ross? Here.
Oh, I'm here.
The notification, this emergency meeting was posted in three committed locations, and we can follow the open meeting laws that are posted at City Hall. And the first agenda item is action on the request of two bedits from the retention pond that would empty into 14th Street, start heading east highway. Any discussion? I think everyone that I, I think every council member's gone out and looked at it. And I talked to Rod Hanson, and Rod said that they do have a permit with the highway that they can dump that water into the right away by the, same way all the way to the east, so. It was then when they built 14th Street. And two of the highest cost items are the concrete connections that they have to build. One at the retention pond where the tube comes out of the pond at an angle, and then we'll head north. And then one where they take it from the north, going north to moving it, so it's going from north and then heading east. And Rod said that the cost is what the, the South Street Pavers paving group has said is gonna be $25,180, I believe that's the amount, which I guess Dave and Kim have agreed to cost share with us. And then Rod said that the engineering cost could be between $1,000 and $2,000. So that's, and I, I looked at it, it does have a lot of, a couple of branches and some dirt has settled into the ditch that we have from the retention pond 14th Street, but otherwise it looks fairly, fairly stable. And Rod said that the engineers would make sure that the flow is, when they come in, we'd check that the flow, the pipe would be going with enough of a grade that we would be getting the water out of there. So that's all the homework that I did. Is there other discussions?
Val and I went up and talked to Jim on Friday. We had a few questions about him. He got back to us after he talked to Rod, so I understand that. The question I have is, you know, right now, we have that ditch behind there. Okay, and what happens to the water that's gonna run off from the west to the east? So do you guys follow that? It's coming off of that lot, like, would be south of Dave White's, that's got a hill and it's got a slope. If we get a big rain, where, what's gonna stop that water from running over into Roses? Are we gonna leave a little lip there, or is that all gonna be straightened out? Or is that a concern?
How big of an area is it?
Well, it'd be lot number, like, Dave, Dave and Kim have two lots. They have nine and 10, right? Plus would be eight, lot number eight, where the pond's at. Because right now, there's that, that ditch that stops the water running down that hill. I don't know how much water runs off that hill. But when these people build up on top that hill, they're on what? I don't know.
Larry?
Yeah.
This, this is Dave. You're talking about the east side of where the culvert would go?
Yeah, where the water's coming off the west and going towards the east. What's gonna stop it from spilling over into Jeff Rose's property? Because right now, we have that ditch that catches that water.
But your new tube would go in the bottom of that ditch, correct?
Yeah, that, that is gonna take up that ditch, so my, my thinking is that's gonna be all level, and it'll just.
No. No. I've already talked to Jeff, and I will move a bunch of that dirt that I've got, and we will make a swale or slope it back to the west.
Okay.
It won't go down on Jeff. I've already talked to Jeff.
Okay, so you will put a little lip there, then?
I would say probably a foot or better, Larry.
Okay. And that would run all the way from the north going south, right?
100% of it.
Okay.
You know, let the street to catch the water from the rest of the area, so I, I guess it would just be those two lots, so it shouldn't be a lot of runoff.
No, it shouldn't be, but we've had problems up there with runoffs. But that, that would be a stop if Dave would put a little lip on the east side of lots there, on the east side of his and on the west side of Jeff's, right on the border.
Yep. I assume that has to be five feet in from the line?
I don't know.
I think with the east, but you can put up any place in that water easement, I would assume, right, Jim?
Jim's on mute.
Sorry, I was on mute. Yeah, that, that'd be accurate. Anywhere, I would say to the far east side of that easement. Uh, easement, it would be adequate for. That berm and again, if you get the grass established in there, I don't think we're going to have any severe water runoff.
I think Jeff also, Jeff and Julie also have a, a little bit of a ditch from the retention pond on their property from. Just east of the retention pond, almost to the point where their, where their garage is, it just, there's a. There's the swell we've got now where the PVC pipe would go for, the eighteen inch pipe would go for drainage. But then they also, on the other side, have a little bit of a ditch that, that flows also to the north. So I think that Jeff and Julie would be pretty well protected, especially with Mike, or with, I appreciate that Dave and Kim are working with. Jeff and Julie to make sure that they alleviate the problem. So I think that that's taken care of probably, Larry.
Hey.
I'm not sure, but. Sounds like it.
My other question about a fence around the pond. Do we have any plans of putting a fence around the? Pond?
I don't, I don't think we probably should need to. It's not really a pond, it's just a retention pond, so really it should. Drain and be dry most of the time. I don't know if you've seen the one in Wayne along the highway there, kind of on the way to Baumgartner's or Pack and Save. Um, they even got a playground down in theirs.
Right. Jim said, told Belle and I that it would have a. It fills up a foot or two of water before it reaches the, uh, tube to overflow to drop it out. So there's going to be a foot or two of water in there. Sometimes, right Jim?
And be correct, there'll be water, it, it will retain water before it discharges water.
That, that water will go down into the.
Yeah, where there'll be water in there all the time, I have no idea. It should seep away as well.
It should absorb over time, but if. It can rain every week, you know, we might have to consider about putting a fence around it.
Well, I think the best thing to do would be to just watch it and see how it works and then if you think that there's a water, or safety with. Safety issue with the water, then that would be a time to look at maybe a, some type of a barrier. But I think they're like, I think most of it is going to go out just as groundwater, the, that two feet below the tube or the foot and a half. I don't think would be there very long.
No.
Another one up at the school that drains a track, that one gets water, but then it disappears after the rain.
Jim, the city's going to do a better job maintaining that pond, aren't they mowing the weeds around it and keeping it clean?
And once we get our street in, there'll be a little bit better access for us to get in there, so. We'll keep and.
Yeah.
Keep it mowed and maintained, yes?
Yeah, I'd like to see it maintained like they do the one over by Wayne at Pack and Save, that's a clean one and. That'll come when we get it developed.
Any, any other discussion?
I do have a quick question. You said there'd be one or two thousand dollars in engineering costs. Hasn't this already been engineered?
I called Rod and he said that there would be probably, he thought it would be less than a thousand. But they, they need to come up and make sure that this, it's got the correct grade, that the pipe is being laid correctly, I guess. And he thought there would be eight hundred to maybe a little over a thousand dollars in engineering costs for that.
That's good because I added up the invoices and it's almost twenty thousand dollars already we spent for engineering on this project of South Main. Starting in October of nineteen. Twenty thousand dollars.
October of? October of twenty nineteen?
What, Paul? Sorry, I missed you.
Ross answered your question. No, it wasn't engineered, it was taken out before they. Before the city committed to the project and they just designed the. Storm drain inlets in the street itself. And I think the majority of the cost will probably be a little bit of supervision and some surveying to make sure that it's got a good grade. And it's going to drain out of there.
Okay. My internet connection is unstable. Let's see. If there's no other discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the. Installation of the eighteen inch drainage pipe. On the South Main, from the South Main Detention Pond to Fourteenth Street.
Hey Paul, I got a couple of questions yet.
Okay.
What's the cost of this going to be and what's Dave's cost?
Well, the cost was, I think the cost estimate came to all of us by email, was twenty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty or something such as that.
Okay.
And I called Rod and Rod said there would be an additional eight hundred to, up to two thousand dollars in engineering as far as inspections and making sure they get it right. And I thought that. Jim had talked to Dave and Kim and that they were willing to share. Fifty percent of the cost of the installation of the pipe, that wouldn't, that would not include the engineering. We would. We would bear the cost, the total hundred percent cost of the engineering. That's how I understood it.
Okay, Dave and Kim will go fifty fifty with the cost of the pipe and the installation, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And then, uh, is it going to be a one payment for Dave and Kim or are they going to? Work some terms out?
Uh, we're hoping to do one, one payment.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all.
Larry?
I don't have anymore.
Can we get a motion to, to do this then, to complete this project? It would be good to get it out of the way before we start on Fourteenth Street. And Fourteenth Street, as far as I'm concerned, would be a paving district that the. Property owners along there would, would pay for the cost of the paving. And the city would do the intersections and the installation of the large storm sewer. But for this motion, we just simply want to have a motion to put that drainage, that eighteen inch drainage. Even for, from the detention, retention pond to turn east towards Fourteenth Street or down Fourteenth Street.
Paul, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, the paving district on Fourteenth Street, now are you going to pave? From the intersection on Main down to my lot line on Fourteenth?
You know, Dave, I don't know what South Main does. I thought that they turned the intersection. From the original discussion, if I remember it correctly, they do the intersection there and then they go a little bit. I don't know if it goes all the way to the end of your property, but I would assume that it does. Jim might have more of them on that than I do.
The paving project goes to the end of your property, Dave.
So Dave wouldn't be included in that paving project, correct Jim?
I'm not for sure about. That they might come back and, and want to assess the two corner lots.
But when we purchased the lots, we had already paid for the street.
Yep. How they work that out is up to the council. We have only looked at the assessments and the possibility of it, so. I guess that's up to the council how they want to do that.
Well, as it was explained to me, Dave. We are paid, we. Your house payment, your payment for the lots actually is the cost of the lot and the city is paying. For the total paving project on South Main. It's our second project that we've done, the total paving cost. And then your lot price was raised slightly, but it doesn't come anywhere near the cost of a paving. So you can either look at it one of two ways. You've got three lots or you. And basically your lot payment is helping us pay for the street, but it's, then it's not paying for the lot. So I think you're getting a good deal on that, but as I understood it. They were taking that almost to the end of your property, they're going on Fourteenth Street as I saw the diagram. And I think the paving district would be the properties that go east. Beyond you, but I know from our greenhouse, once in a while, and like when they did. Seventh Street, they came, even though the greenhouse had no property at that time there. They did come to us because they did put a slight, it was a small percentage of the paving. That we paid going both directions on Seventh Street towards. You know, beyond Mike Benson's and then the, to the alley going to the west. We paid a little bit for that. And I think that's what Jim is getting at, that you may be assessed a small amount. When we paid for our, paving in front of our house, we had two lots also, or a lot and a half. But we paid half of the paving for that distance and the school paid the other half. We had no intersections because we're a long ways from an intersection. But I know that when we had paid Seventh Street, that the greenhouse did have to pay for that, even though. We didn't own any property that had flooded it, we did have to pay partially. So you may get a percentage payment. But it doesn't amount to nearly as what it would cost if you paid for the paving in front of your house. And a paving district, if you do get assessed for paving, you have a choice of paying it immediately. Or it can be spread out over a ten or fifteen year period. And that's what we did with ours. So that's all I know and I don't know that anyone has any information beyond that, but you're not going to get a. You're not going to get an assessment for that property that, for that street that runs in front of your property and that's where you get to a hundred percent assessment. And that's all taken care of. Do we have a motion to, to do, receive with that installation of that eighteen inch pipe? I'll make a motion to approve that eighteen inch type of pipe. Ditch to the Fourteenth Street. Thanks Scott.
Second. I second the motion.
So Val seconded it? Any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and Ross?
Paul, sorry, just a second. So the motion includes the city paying the engineering costs? And Dave and Kim fifty with the rest?
I, I think that that would be fair. I think that Dave and Tim should have to share engineering costs.
Is that?
That's the way I'd make the motion. The city, we cover all the city, or engineering. And then Dave and, uh, Kim cover or do fifty fifty with the project. Okay, that clarifies it. Thanks Scott. And Val, you seconded that motion?
Yes, I did.
All right, Ross?
I.
Val?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
And Larry?
Hi.
All right, thank you. Thanks to everybody involved in the project. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, and I had it out of order, I guess, is. Action on the request to trench fiber in the city right of way. And I don't know anything about this, I. Know that it's on the agenda. And we've talked, I talked to Zach briefly about it, that I believe, uh, Brian Madison and his company wanted to. Have access to putting, to the alleys to put the fiber down. And maybe Zach could fill us in, or maybe Jim could fill us in on that.
Brian was on.
Oh, is he still on?
Oh, he's here. You want to explain it, Brian?
Yeah, Brian could explain it, that'd be great. Are you still on, Zach?
I can.
I'm not hearing anything.
I'm not hearing anything Brian's saying either, if he's talking.
Try and call. I wonder if Brad will get back on.
I can see him, I can't hear him.
He's on, he's on, I can see him.
You can't hear him.
You know, this is a perfect time to give you a hard time about your internet, Brian. You can hear me. Well, now you're muted, now you're not.
I wonder if we should go to the. Filter plant property and then come back to Brian?
Sure.
Filter plant property acquisition. And someone from either, you know, Jim or Zach or whoever's there could fill us in on this.
This was your thing with Christensen?
Okay, I talked to, uh, I guess. We had the three initial sites. And you've got all that in your booklet that explains all three of the sites. And I think Jim and Mike thought that the best site would be that north of the. This, by, near the county shop in that location to the north. Of the access road that gets us to the. To the wells and so on. And I guess, uh, they're having, they're in the process of trying to acquire that. And the person that owns the property may not be willing to sell that half acre. Or quarter acre. And so I had talked to the city office and I did call Christiansen well. Sent them a map and sent them the building, a picture of the building that we're planning. And they called back this morning and said that they would be interested, interested in discussing that with us. And there's a possibility that they would sell that triangle. The problem we have is they kind of wanted to try to keep a forty foot right of way. To the east of that building and that is the area that we thought would be the best suited, so. But we may be able, I mean, we can have discussions with them and see if that is something that we would like to pursue. But they want to keep their, their storage building there and they would like to have forty feet. On the east side of that and then we would have to get, I mean, they thought that. There wouldn't be a problem with us getting the rest of it, but I didn't really want to put that out there, but it is, it is looking like we could possibly get some ground there.
It makes sense to me to not try to cross the road that we all use all the time. It'd be nice to have it back out of the way. And still readily accessible to everything that we needed to get to.
Yes, they, they did indicate that they wouldn't have any problem with us using their driveway. Into the well company to access that building. And you could possibly face it to the south and. But I just tried to see if they'd be willing to sell some ground and. And they said they would, that they would work with us on that if we desire that. Location and I haven't even looked again at sites. The other two sites that are further down, the one site is quite a ways down the right of way. Quite a distance from the filter plant. The other one is up close to the electric building and it sounded like that didn't have enough room. So if the one, I just think that maybe the, my thoughts would be that the. Water and Sewer Committee should get together and look at them again, the whole council could look at them for that matter. And maybe just look the area over again. Before the main meeting possibly. But the, the building is down the road a ways, but we still, we do need to start making plans for it and. But the, the building is down the road a ways, but we still, we do need to start making plans for it and.
Um, how much toll do we have to have set in stone as they go after funding? Because that's where they're at now, right? Since we approved the project, they're working on funding?
Right, but we need to, I think the sooner we get a site selected, at least what we think will be a good site, that would be a positive step. The, the problem, we're having a problem getting property on the, I think to the north. And that's where the flood, when, when we had the flood and I don't know if it was 69 or 70, whatever year it was, the water came all the way up to the road there, but it didn't go over the road that I'm talking about. So the north side of the road had water standing. There were canisters of fertilizer floating out there, I think empty ones probably. There was quite a bit of water there on the north side of that access road. So I would like to see it, I'd like to see it on the south side just for that reason. And I know the dike wasn't, wasn't there at the time, but even so, I'd just like to see the south if possible.
I think we need to pursue all the building sites and have council involvement and for selection and talk about it.
I agree.
Most of the information, the report was just what they had gotten word of mouth. We were, remember that we were down there that long time ago. And I don't know, Ross is the one that I remember saying that maybe that, you know, talk to Solmons or Christiansens and see if they'd be willing to, to possibly sell some land back there. But you know what they'd be willing to sell would be to the east. And they may not be willing, but they said they would at least talk to us about the ground to the east of that building. It's basically a triangle Ross is familiar with it because he's got property that abuts that. So that's probably enough discussion on that, isn't it?
Yep.
Okay, we'll go to the next, we'll see if, is Brian on the, is he on now?
Yeah, can you guys hear us now?
Absolutely.
All right. Everything was working but our microphone, not sure what happened there.
Okay.
So I can give you a little bit of a background on our project. We're currently building a fiber to the home project in Wayne. Some of you may have seen us working there. We'd like to start a second project concurrent with that one in Wakefield. We would be laying fiber optics to every house and every commercial building in town. I would like to do the entire town of Wakefield this year. It'd be right around a million dollars in infrastructure we'd be putting in here. I've talked to Jim and Zach about some of the right of ways and things like that, where we're looking to go. We've got some maps to kind of show you a little bit of what we're looking at. Basically, we would be laying an underground cable in the city's right of ways in the alley to be able to distribute that to every house and commercial building. There would be a small section off, on the backside of Main Street buildings. There's about two blocks on either side that are concrete alley. We would probably want to put some temporary aerial stuff up just so we don't slow down the project because that takes a lot more logistics to get underneath that much concrete, but we would only do that temporarily. It'd be very, very small, not much weight. And then as a part of that, we also turned in a building permit for a small communications building. It would be next to the post office on the backside of that lot behind Century Link's building there. Be a 16 by 16 structure just to house the head end equipment for all of that stuff. I spoke with Jim a little bit about what kind of permitting is needed to get this project rolling. We would like to get any kind of permits or contracts that we need to operate done by Friday because I would like to start Monday.
Wow.
To be, it's a big project, it is a big project, but we want to make sure we get it right. Brian, if you put up aerial things and I, as I understand it, then if we allow you to put it up on our poles, then every company can put it up on the poles for the same cost, right?
Yeah, you're already kind of there with ABB on your poles now with the pole attachment agreements. I think they're open to anybody, but as long as the pole is engineered to handle that much weight. And I know American Broadband has put a ton of stuff on a lot of poles. We've dealt with that in other towns where they're borderline anyway. But we, ours would be very, very minimal. And we would actually put that underground as soon as we're done with the rest of the project. We don't want to have anything permanently above ground.
And you're, you've completed the project in Wayne or nearly completed?
Uh, no, that's a three year project. It's about three to four million dollars we're working on right now. But we'd like to start another town as well. We started last fall in Wayne. We've got a, most of the commercial district done. And we'll be starting residential this year as well.
When will you have customers in like Wayne or Wakefield? Like when can you take on a customer?
We already have, we already have fiber customers in Wayne, Wakefield. If we can start Monday within a month, we could have people where we're starting, oh, come on. We can add customers as we build.
Any other questions for Brian? The biggest thing I would think would be getting that completed as far as what alleys are you going to go down? All the alleys or you're going to go north?
Yeah, pretty much. We can, hang on, we'll put up a map here.
Okay.
Brian, what are, what is the, what are you looking to do with the fibers for as far as internet goes? About what is the?
Yeah, so. So we have television, telephone and cable TV that we're going to offer as a part of this, as well as in the near future, we're going to have some options for advertising, local access channels, stuff like that, that we're working on. But for the time being, we're just trying to get people faster internet, things like that. So we'll be offering speeds probably around the 200 to 300 megabit range for around $70 to $80 a month. We haven't nailed down all the residential pricing yet. Commercial pricing is about $2 a meg is what it's going for right now. But we can kind of lay that out more as we go.
I know that was a huge opportunity for a city to be able to have. And so it's something obviously that I think would be great for the city.
I do think, this is, I do, you know, we've done a little bit of research on fiber optic. Not very much because we haven't had very much time to do that. And I think there's, you know, there's other considerations we have to investigate in terms of this. I don't disagree, it'd be a nice service for Wakefield. But, you know, what kind of pole agreements we need to have? What kind of franchise fees, if there are any, that we need to talk about? What other, what other companies will want to come to town? What, whether or not they're going to do their own fiber optic or Brian will be willing to rent his fiber optics to them? I think we need, I think we have a lot more information we need to gather that we haven't seen anything about this other than Brian wants to do this in town. So I'd like a little bit more comprehensive, a little bit more comprehensive plan to investigate. And then, and then some opportunity to create those contracts before we decide that, you know, before, before you go forward with this. We might then need to work out some, some agreements that we can't really, we don't really know we need to have at the moment. That's what I guess I'm saying.
We can't do that by Friday.
No, it can't get done by Friday, but I mean, we'll try. We can try to do it as quickly as possible, but Friday isn't possible.
But why the urgency, Brian?
Well, because of this virus thing, most businesses are closed. So we're currently not hooking up other customers. I've got a massive amount of staff that I'm paying to not do anything right now. So it's down to Wakefield and Pender. And they've already agreed to take us on. So if not next week in Wakefield, we will be going to Pender. I would like to do it here, obviously, because I live here. But if that's the case, I mean, that's what we got to do.
They entered into contracts in Wayne. You know that there are contracts that you got to enter into and agreements that have to be made. You can't just go.
We have no contracts in Wayne.
The only contract in Wayne that we have is a pole attachment agreement. Everything else is just utilizing the right of ways. To go into the individual homes, that would end up being a conversation with each individual homeowner, allowing us to bring the line from our vault to their homes. And those are conversations that would take place as we reach those points. But as far as agreements within a city, the only agreement we have is a pole attachment agreement outlining the cost per pole that in which we are attached to.
I don't think Wayne lets you do the whole city in one permit.
Correct. We have right of way permits for every block that we open.
Right.
But that's, there's no contract.
For the whole town. And the point is, we don't really have your plan. I mean, you're, you're telling us what it is. But in order for us to know what the issues are and, you know, formulate agreements to address those issues, we need some time. I need something more concrete from you in writing or something.
Well, and you guys are talking about providing service to homes. I, once you get your, once you get your fiber optics in the right of way, will there be a connection fee to the homeowner in order for them to get, get your service?
No, we, we do not charge any connection fee.
Unless they refuse it and we have to come back. Then there would be a connection fee. If they do it while we're here, then we don't charge any.
They don't have to take the service at that point in time. That's completely up to them. But when we have the crew in the area putting the drop line in the neighborhood, that, then we don't charge an installer hookup fee.
So if I say, yeah, go ahead and connect, then do I still need to use your service? Or can I still use my old service because it'll be cheaper? But I can move to your service when I'm ready to?
Correct. You wouldn't need to take our service? No cost.
We're just implementing the infrastructure. If you can stay with your other provider for as long as you want. We're just offering to install it for free while we're here. If we have to take somebody off the line in another town and come back to install your house, then it will cost you.
I know that Century Link is interested in providing fiber optic service in Wakefield too. So what about, what about, and I assume you know that too. What, how do you foresee that working with your fiber optic? Or will they have to do their own trenching? Will they, can they rent?
Nobody's going to use ours.
Pardon?
It's not, when we put our fiber in, it's for us to use, not for others.
Other competition now, if someone needed a transport dark fiber, that would be able to be utilized for other larger companies that might need something like that for cell phone tower or other things. But as far as direct competition would be entailed, they would need to do their own trenching as well.
What's the speed of your fiber optic? What's the, would it be faster than what we have?
Yes. Right now, the majority of locations in the business district in Wayne, we are delivering 100 over 100 megabytes. We can deliver up to one gig.
I, I didn't hear that, but what, how much?
We can deliver up to a gigabyte or a gigabit per second. That's the speed that we can offer right now. We can go higher than that, but there's no need to because that's faster than anyone would ever use.
Brian, Danny, I have a question. This is Mal. How does it go from the alley to my house? Does it go overhead? Does it go underground?
Nope. So in, in every alley, we will place a below ground vault that will have a splice enclosure in it. And we will take individual strand fiber to each home and splice it within that enclosure. We have a dish which tracks vibratory plow. We'll put the drop line six inches in the ground. But every house will have its own fiber line, if you will.
It's similar to how they put in lawn sprinklers. They knife it in so it does very little damage to your lawn.
I'm just wondering about my neighbors. Because I'm on the corner and I have neighbors. And so you'll have to, well, I have to get everything marked out across their backyard because it's in my house.
How did your installation in Wayne go? Has it gone smoothly?
It's, it's going really well. We actually, we put aerial downtown for the same reason right now temporarily because they have concrete alleys. The city of Wayne is looking to replace those concrete alleys in the future years. So we worked out a deal with them where we're going to hang some aerial until that point. And that point, we'll put it all underground. But otherwise, we've, we've had really good success there. We do a lot of boring and plowing both. We've got customers online and they're absolutely ecstatic. Passing the word around, we've got a huge list, people waiting. So we've got a lot of towns calling us right now, asking us to come in. And so that's, this is our next point is where we go next. So because of this virus, it's kind of put us in the position to where we need to start putting some more infrastructure in in other places. So we're reaching out to all these towns and I guess whoever lets us in is where we're going to go.
And, and the reason we can, we're looking at a, another town, not only because of the virus and different things allowing us more time, but basically we have a crew that runs our boring machines and a crew that runs our vibratory plows. And they really can't run simultaneously as the boring machine puts stuff under the road. From there, the trencher hooks on, vibratory plow hooks on and does the alleyways. So it's easy to have the boring machine over in one town and the vibratory plow in another. And you just keep swapping back and forth so progress is made in multiple locations.
So this came up rather suddenly then for you guys as far as trying to take on one more town.
Yeah.
You didn't work out contracts, did you sign with the city of Wayne? Did they just give you the right of way to their alleys or what?
So what, we went to Wayne, we gave Wayne a map of the town, just like we showed you guys. We filled out the permit for pole attachment agreement as well as the right of ways. We got a bond for the right of ways and that's all we needed.
And basically they'll, they'll, they come back, we let them know when we're done with a block or two and they come back and check our work. Basically just signing off on it. If there's an issue, they communicate that with us. They go back and fix it so it meets their standards and we just move on from there. Our guys, our, go ahead.
From the time you started talking to Wayne about this until you reached an agreement with them? I mean, I can't believe it was only a week that you had the discussions about that and how you were going to do this and how it's going to be set up.
So I guess when in our initial phase with Wayne, we didn't approach them with anything. We just filed for right of way permit and started boring because that's all protocol calls for. It took us about a month to reach the pole attachment agreement. But it took us a couple of months to get down there anyway. So the timeframe wasn't any big deal. We just, we are trying to have an open line of communication and inform people our plan when we have the opportunity to do so. We realized that, you know, attaching to the pole and getting that legal language correct takes time. And we wouldn't attach to the poles until we have things that are, you know, signed and C's crossed and I dotted. That's just part of the, the business that we're in. But we could file a right of way permit tomorrow and wait for locate. If, and then once located or even the city approves the right of way permit, start digging. But we want. But we wanted to come here as a whole and show the plan because we just like to move forward and make progress. And this is, this is large city type of technology in rural Nebraska. Our hearts are in rural Nebraska, and this is where we're gonna be. So we just, that's why we're just coming here to, I guess, introduce the plan, to understand things, take time. And we wouldn't necessarily do anything outside the lines of what is allowed until the contracts are signed. But at this point in time, we can file for right-of-way permit immediately, begin construction. But we wanna be upfront and talk about the plan.
The right-of-way permits, you apply to the city for right-of-way permits. Is that right?
Correct. Yep.
It would be no different than any other utility, like the gas company, or the telephone company, or the cable company. We're just installing another utility.
It's not like Dollar General, guys. You know, you enter into an agreement before you work the details out, and we're still fighting over that issue. So it's important that we have all the issues and all the plans out here from the lawyer's standpoint before you go forward with this. You don't know what the, what issues are gonna come up, you know, within four days' time.
What about the easements? Where, what about working with that part of town that has no alleyways? Would you?
We talked to Jim about that, and at that point, we would use the, the front easement in the places that wouldn't have alleys.
Oh, the street, or the terrace areas?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have a couple of questions? So you guys, you trench the alleys, then you bore underneath the streets, and that's how you connect everything, right?
Yes.
Okay. What, what utilities do we have running in our alleys?
Jim, or I talked to Mogus, I think. He said, I think the sewer and gas are in the alleys. And then there would be some telephone and cable in the alley as well.
But we, we are not allowed to dig without getting locate cleared through the 811 system. We have a potholer and mudback where we are required to locate all utilities prior to crossing anything. And that's all part of the project and required for us to do so.
We're registered with 811 and, and do all that permitting and stuff through them as well.
What's the degree of, you know, separation? Is this gonna hinder us accessing any of the other utilities with fibers in the ground?
It shouldn't. We, we, we like to stay away, like in Wayne. Anytime there's a main power utility, like a main power feed that comes into town, we either bore way below it so that everybody can access it without any problems, or we just avoid that and go to the other side of the street.
Okay. And I'm not very good with this stuff, but how easy is it to fix a fiber line? Say we're, say we're doing some work and we cut a fiber line. Do a bunch of people lose internet for a week, or is it pretty?
No. Well, initially, for a week, no. For a couple hours, yes. Once we get down the road and we're able to establish a redundant circuit, it would be basically the individual, one individual homeowner would lose internet until we splice the fiber back together. But as far as fixing it within a couple hours, it shouldn't be an issue.
It kind of all depends on where the cut is, if it's in a main line or if it's in a peripheral line, and how many people are on that line, down line. But usually, it's a small percentage that are gonna get affected at that point.
Okay. And you said it's basically like you're laying a utility. So, you know, hypothetically, if you say abandon the lines, or let's just say 10 years from now, you're, you're not doing this anymore, can someone else come in and, and utilize those lines?
Yeah, so that infrastructure at that point would, we wouldn't abandon it. You know, it would be either purchased from us or, you know, somebody would retain ownership of that down the line. Fiber optic infrastructure is about like real estate right now. It's worth a lot of money to a lot of different companies. So it's, it, it costs us a massive amount of money to put it in. So we, we do take our time and make sure it's done right. But on the same effect, there's a huge problem, I guess you would say, in this area of the country with lax internet access. So we're trying to bridge that gap a little bit.
Well, I, I guess I would just say appreciate you, you know, looking at Wakefield, and especially with you guys being local, you know, we wanna do whatever we can do to help out the local businesses, especially, especially if there's a need. So thanks for, you know, the alleys wanting to invest in the community.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion?
Is there any other fiber buried in Wakefield?
There is a couple fiber optic lines that are in Wakefield. Central Link has one that supplies their central office there in Wakefield, and ABB has one as well. Other than wall bombs and the school, I don't know of any other places that are connected to fiber. They are just, the fiber that's here is mainly just feeding those telephone junctions and things like that.
Are you provide, are you intending to provide television and telephone through your fiber optic in Wayne also?
Yes. Yes. Every one of our customers will have the same options.
When we were at the League of Municipalities meeting, two, three years ago, actually, they talked about fiber being the new method of communication and, and actually, they compared it to the rivers. It went from rivers to railroad to interstate highway, and the new transportation method is fiber. And how important it was for small communities especially to get that. And the speaker was pretty good. He's the one that told us, you know, Brian, you came and wanted to put stuff in the water tower. And he's the one that said, don't put anything in the water tower because if you let one person up there, everybody has access to it. So it was, it was an interesting session, but I'm the least learned as far as anything that has to do with technology. So, but how long did it take you to get the right-of-way to start in Wayne?
A day.
A day.
We walk in the city office, fill out a piece of paper, and they pretty much approve it there. And we walk away and start digging.
Wakefield has an excavation permit you have to get as well, so you too permit.
And Wayne, Wayne just lets you do up to four blocks at a time on that permit system, don't they?
Yes, also correct.
So you would need a permit to do like four blocks to start with?
That's what they make.
Just an alley right-of-way permit?
We would basically provide a map of the right-of-way we plan to use in that four blocks with the permit to be approved, to be looked at and approved.
And you got that approved at the city office?
Yes.
And then it later went to the council?
It never went to the council.
No, we've never gone to the council in Wayne.
The only time we went to the council was for the pole attachment agreement.
So you work with Wes Blakely, or did you work with the utility guys?
Yeah. We work with Wes and Tim and Joel and all those guys. They've been good to work with.
Joel Olson?
Joel Hanson.
Okay, Joel Hanson, that's right, yeah. That's right, okay. Been a good discussion. Anybody have anything else to say?
Only thing I would add, Paul, is, I mean, from the attorney's standpoint, I would not, I would advise not to enter into the agreement at this time. I'm not against the project or anything. I agree, it's a great project, but we don't need to rush into something. And I know Brian has a schedule, and I understand, you know, from his perspective. But we gotta look from the city's perspective, make sure we dot all the i's and cross all the t's. So when the project is done, it's done right, in my opinion.
And how long do you think that would take?
Well, whenever we can get something from, I mean, we learned a lot tonight, you know, information from Brian that we didn't have before. I think we should have that full agreement worked out and the map. And I don't know, I think he said he already submitted the building permit for that 16 by 16 building, is that right?
Correct.
Has that been approved yet?
I would imagine the building permit could wait, and the pole access could wait, couldn't it, guys?
We're gonna need our building right-of-way to get our equipment put in.
Did you get the, like at Wayne, did you have to get the building permit through the city council or the?
We, we bought a building in Wayne.
Bought one.
Yeah, we have a 60 by 100.
Looked at and approved by the council at a regular meeting?
And that, that'd be fine.
If the pole, if the pole permit could wait, I would think that we could get the right-of-way.
Yeah, the pole, the pole attachment agreement that we have in Wayne, they took a copy of American Broadband's pole attachment agreement that's already in place and put our information in it, and we signed it, and it was approved.
They charged it the same amount, I'm sure, right?
Yeah. There's a schedule on there for how much it's charged this year, and then the rates increase a little bit each year as they go along.
And then we have the same, probably the same agreement here with broadband, I imagine, or the same package agreement, not saying the same amount.
Yeah.
Some places, council, we also have franchise agreements in place. There's a cable franchise, if you're gonna run cable over it, cable agreements. And those are the kind of things.
We need to know the details of so we can know where we.
Well, franchise, franchise agreements are a business thing, not a, not an installation thing. That's something that you agree on with the company to, that, like, the franchise agreements that American Broadband has, is the city is then responsible for putting in duct for them during all of their street replacements and everything like that in exchange for a percentage of the profits.
We do not have a franchise agreement with the city of Wayne, nor has the conversation come up. It's not our plan to enter any such agreements with any city we serve.
Maybe the city doesn't want to allow the service without a franchise agreement. And there are cities across the state who do have, require franchise agreements.
And that's fine. I mean, they can require that, but we offer, we're offering other things to cities that are much more beneficial to them. And we, I, we do our own construction. We won't, we don't want anybody else doing our construction for us or anything like that.
And that's fine, Brian, that's all well and good. We just need to have an understanding of what, who's gonna do what.
Yep, and that's fine. We can enter in a different business agreement. You know, I've talked, I talked to Jim a little bit and Zach a little bit about things we can offer the city that you're not gonna get with other companies. And we're more than happy to help the city out and give back. But franchise agreements are an old-school way of doing things, and we don't, we don't believe in that anymore. And it's not good for either party, really, for what they have to do to get that.
Would it be too late, Brian, if, you know, if we got a council meeting coming up here in, in two weeks, I think, just over two weeks? If you were able to kind of process this and go through some of the permits and things like that, and then maybe discuss it further at the next council meeting?
That would be fine. And just get us a list of information you might wanna see from us, so I can get that provided. Obviously, like I said, we wanna work with communities we're in. There are business decisions that we will make that are beneficial for us, but also open negotiations to benefit both parties. And that's just kind of where we're at right now. We realize this is kind of a blitz, if you will.
We didn't plan on going to Wakefield till next year until this virus thing came out. So we really haven't had time to plan. We've engineered this whole town in less than a week. Our guys have spent night and day on engineering software, mapping this out so we could get something done. But we, we as a company need to keep moving during this virus thing while everybody's closed down. And if we're not hooking customers up because everybody's closed, we need to be building out somewhere else.
So how long will it take to install it, do you think?
If we can get started now, I think we can have this done before frost.
Meaning September, October, or something?
Yeah, the whole town. I, I think we can have it done this year. But we gotta get moving.
If you went to Pender, is it the same kind of timeline?
Pender would be about the same size build as, as Wakefield, yes.
And what's Pender gonna require?
They have, they require a building permit, and that was it, and a bond.
And they want the map when we're done.
They want a map when they're done of all of our stuff so that they can have it for their utility records.
What's the amount of the bond, Brian, or how do they come up with the amount, you know?
They weren't sure on the amount. They were gonna look into that. I think our one in Wayne is like $1,000.
$1,000? Okay.
Yeah.
That's hardly worth messing with.
No, but that's one of their laws that's been on the books since 1950 and hasn't changed.
And that's part of the reason they only allow us four blocks open at a time? Because of the small bond.
And they wanna make sure, you know, we've worked closely with Joel Hanson. He does our inspections on our right-aways when we're done. You know, we put the right-aways back, we seed them back to grass. We like to leave everything the way we found it or even better. So, you know, we don't wanna put any more burden on the city. You know, we wanna make sure this is good for everybody.
Yeah, Joel's a real good man. He, he was on the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resource District that gave us half the cost of our, of our cost for our night. So we've worked with Joel before, he does things really well, I think, so that's a good.
And he's been, he's been real happy with our cleanup and the right-aways and everything like that, so.
How many cuts did you have in other guys' cable or fiber in Wayne? Did you have any accidents where you cut somebody else's line, you were talking about how you fixed it?
We, we've only had one, one cut to date. That was American Broadband, and they, they didn't locate a line that they had in there, so that was on them to fix.
So in four blocks, you're not gonna have 10 or 15 cuts in the soil? Yeah, okay.
The guy that runs our boring machine is a licensed electrician. He's got 10 years' experience on the boring machine. We bought him one exactly like he ran at his previous occupation, so he's pretty fluent with it. He's very OCD about his work. And he does a good job, and that's why he's in the place he is for us today. But I guess, you know, in the interest of, if your guys' time and everybody work on getting the information together that you need from us so we can try to establish a partnership and keep this moving forward.
Yeah, we'd like to have a good partnership. If we could get it done before next council meeting, maybe we could have a special meeting and just approve your, you can, I guess, if we have to approve it, we could approve it that you start on your four blocks and give you the right-of-way. I know that's not what you wanna hear, is it?
No, that's, that's great. If we, you know, we could, you could even approve a portion of the plan, you know, to where we could just get started. That's what we're looking for, is just to get started in the least amount of time possible.
So you could get started without the, I'm gonna ask Lee this. Could they get started without the full, all the stuff that you require, that you're talking about, Lee? Like the, the pole, the pole structures and the, all the things that you'd like to have included in it?
We won't touch the poles until we have an agreement.
No. What I'd like to see is we work with Danny or Brian to get the information, let them know exactly what we want. And then we can work our tails off to get that sum together so you can, you know, approve it at the next meeting. That's what I'd ra, rather see, so we have all the rules kind of in place before.
So, Lee, how long do you think it would take?
Well, it's hard to tell, but we've got a main meeting.
Of what they need.
Could you guys, could you guys, could you guys really dive into it this week and, and communicate with each other? And maybe we'd get more of a sense of how long that would take, so that we can get?
Well, we can, we can look at this. You won't have to wait till the 13th necessarily.
Well, we can, you know, you have to wait till the 13th necessarily, if we can, you know, if we can do it sooner, if we can get, get into that, get the information back, get the agreements, some kind of tentative thing going forward, and as soon as we can do it, we can push it.
I think that would be best-case scenario, if we could, if we could just really get, um, obviously, we need to have everybody on board with it. I, I obviously think it's a great project, and I think it'd be great for the city, especially on, on the business front, we're recruiting and trying to get businesses here in town, um, there's nothing like fiber, it's gonna be, gonna be great if, if we can get it, but obviously, we, we need to get everybody on board and, and just get our ducks in line and get everything figured out before we...
So, if we could do that and get, if you could get the information for, to Lee, and then Lee could give a list of things that need to be done, and he could get, if we get checked off on some of the things to give you the right-of-way, we could sure do that. But I'm the one, Lee's right, I'm the one that wants to slow things down, because every time we hurry, it seems like we end up costing the taxpayers dollars, and the Dollar Store gave an example, that was a great example. We signed an exclusionary for no reason.
We're okay if you don't wanna, you know, if you don't wanna approve the whole project at once, and, but, you know, we're completely fine with that, we're just, we wanna start this project and finish it this year. Um, if we can get, say, one street approved, get that started, get going, you guys can kinda see how we operate, feel a little bit more comfortable with how good a work we do, and then, you know, that may take away some of the hesitation there as well.
You can start with my house.
Well, is it okay if the cable, then we get back to you, and if you get the list in, then we could ask Lee how long it's gonna take to at least get the initial start on the right-of-way? Is that agreeable? Teresa, what do you think?
That's fine, thanks.
Is that agreeable to you guys?
That's fine.
We get it sooner rather than later, we could, we'd let you know, and if we have to have a special meeting, we'll have a special meeting. Otherwise, Ross is right, the 23rd, I think, of April is our next regular meeting, or of May, I mean, 15th of May, sorry. We're, what, 23 days away, three weeks away, I guess?
May 13th.
13th. Is that working for you guys or not? Not really?
Yeah, it'll be fine.
All right, appreciate it, fellas, thank you.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Yep.
Brian, Larry Soderbergh, Andrew Antrist.
Hey, sorry to interrupt, but I gotta work tonight and duty calls, so I gotta go.
Okay. All right, thanks, Ross.
You bet. Talk to you later.
All right, appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Yeah, again, we got, we've had some long discussions on some things. Uh, the next item is that the, I had written on my own thing was the appointment, the, the third reading of the park board, and is that something we have to do before we appoint the park board? Is that right? That's the next agenda item? We've never done, we still have another three reading, that's why we didn't appoint the park board last meeting, we, we have to do the third reading and approve it, and then we could appoint the two boards, is that what's next on the agenda?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And we have to, we have to do the third reading, and then we have to, uh, introduce and move to pass, is that right, Lee?
Yeah, but it's not on the agenda for the next meeting.
Well, it's on appointment of remaining boards, committees, and authorities.
I wouldn't say it'd come under that. It would be, yes, the reading, which I would have, there's nothing on the agenda about dealing with the ordinance.
So we could, all we can do then, we can't appoint the park board unless, or can we port, can we appoint the boards then?
We need a tentative appointment to take, to take effect when the, when the ordinance is passed, I suppose.
Yeah, we could appoint the boards, and should we do that, or do you wanna wait?
I think it'd be preferable just to wait, and just make sure it's clearly on whenever we have our next meeting.
Well, we're a little bit in a bind with the park board, because it is, it would, now it'd be into May, and the pool would not have a staff, and if they allow us to open, even if it's mid, you know, middle or end of June or mid-July, we probably have to hire staff. I thought you said that I'd already appointed a park board last, in January.
It, okay, Mr. Eaton, isn't it so that you've appointed, um, the, the current ordinance, which we haven't, which, which hasn't been, um, done away with, allows you to go ahead and appoint up to, or at least three members to the park board, and that's what you wanna do. The ordinance allows the park, the park board to be in charge of hiring the pool employees, that's the part that won't go into effect till you pass the ordinance.
Well, at least they can start looking at things. So, is the pool committee Scott Hanson, Larry Soderberg, and, uh, or Tree, Scott Hanson, Teresa Soderberg, and Mike Clay were the people that I thought I appointed, is that right? I'm sure it is.
That's correct.
They've already been appointed, and the two new people, or the three new people in the CRA, you know, we left Sam on that, his term was up because he took over for Megan Weaver at that time, so the CRA, I would appoint Mike Worth, I would like to appoint Mike Worth, and I would like to appoint Sam Utic, and I would like to appoint Tom Henderson, those would be the three appointments, would have to be approved. Okay. This is the CRA, right? Yes, that means seven members, that, that ordinance has been approved already.
Yep. So, those are your appointments, Paul, and then you just need the council to approve it.
I think they, I think we, I just make the appointment, then you got, the, the council has to approve it or not approve it?
Yeah.
So do we need a motion for approval, or just a vote?
Yeah, just a motion and a vote.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the CRA board.
Second?
Second.
All right, Scott, you're the first vote.
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And Val?
Aye.
And Ross is, had, had to leave. Okay, the next item of business is the action request, on a request to approve Civic Center Board hiring, I'll let Val and Larry handle this.
Okay, um, we interviewed, we offered a position to Tammy Mogus, she accepted it, both custodian and manager. Teresa is working on a contract so that we have, um, have things officially correct, and in her research, she has found that, uh, at 30 hours, we have to begin to offer benefits, so we're gonna say Tammy has to work less than 30 hours, like 29 hours per week, and both, both positions, the cleaning and the managing, are $15 an hour, and our budget money is there, and she's ready to begin, and we just need your approval.
Okay, we need a motion to approve Tammy, Tammy Mogus as the Civic Center manager and custodian.
So moved.
Val makes the motion, Larry, or Scott?
I'll second.
Scott's second in the motion? Okay, Larry?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Ross? Okay, I need a, is there anything else that we need to talk about for the good of the count town? If not, we're looking for an adjournment motion.
Hey, hey, just a minute, Paul, where are we going with this, uh, park board about these, uh, lifeguards, if something comes up?
We've, we've got our board already, Larry, we've got Teresa and Scott and Mike.
Okay.
They'll be the board, and then we'll do the third reading to change it, uh, to where the, that they can, they can go ahead and handle the start of getting the lifeguards together. Nobody's advertising right now, but I know that we have five applicants, Zach, is that correct?
Five applicants for what?
For lifeguards.
Oh. Five or six, yeah.
So then we can get the, we can get those, pick those up at the office and park board and start looking at it.
Okay, park board will start looking at that.
They, they, according to Teresa, we're okay there, because they reported in January, and they're gonna be the same ones. It's just, the only thing that is new is the fact that they'll have the, uh, authority to, uh, hire the lifeguards with our approval. They can hire their staff with our approval.
Okay.
And manage the pools, so... Okay?
All right.
All right. Got a motion to adjourn?
I'm adjourned.
You, you're really active tonight, Val, do a lot of moves. Do we have a motion second?
Yep, second.
Second of the motion, thank you. Uh, Scott?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
Thanks, you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Stay healthy.
All right, we will.
All right, thanks.